I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our first item of business is the hearing of visitors.
I have visitors.
Oh, okay. There being no visitors signed up. We will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is item three, which is the bundling of routine matters for a vote on by the school committee. Any member at this point could move to remove an item for specific discussion or remove items. Anyone care to remove any of the items A, B, C, or D? No? Could someone make a motion then to approve items A, B, C, and D of the consent agenda? Mr. Gormly made the motion.
I'm motioning to approve the agenda.
Items A, B, C, and D.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any further discussion? Saying none, all in favor. Item four, communication.
I have some communication here. Just actually came today, and I know you'll be pleased to hear this because I know how many of you have advocated for this. So it says, "Dear Superintendent Smith, on behalf of the 2018 Middle School Women's Soccer Championship Team, we would like to thank you for advocating to bring back middle school sports. As you know, athletics and academics go hand in hand. All of us are good students and we are proud to represent Pluff Academy. We have learned sportswomenship, teamwork, the importance of community, hard work, sacrifice, work ethics, goal-setting, healthy choices, determination, and commitment. All of these life lessons help us to defeat North Middle School, two to one to remain undefeated. We look forward to next year and building upon this year sincerely, Lady Wolf Soccer Team, Pluff Academy, and it is signed by all of the Lady Wolves." So I'm glad they learned our good sportswomenship.
Well, that was very thoughtful. Very thoughtful. Yep. I received that, I think, today from Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Or Dr. McDonald?
Dr. McDonald.
Dr. McDonald. Okay. Well, thank you. Anything else, Madam Superintendent, under communication?
No.
Okay. Item five, report of superintendent of schools.
So it is certainly my privilege to talk about, and I know we saw Peter Columbo. I'm sorry, my view is blocked. Peter, could you come up here? Deputy Superintendent, could you join us up front too? Peter, do you mind sitting up front?
I will. Trained at Brockton, I have my ID on.
Thank goodness. So Peter, you know, we're so pleased that you're here tonight.
Yes.
I know, you know, with the holidays upon us, you know, this is certainly a difficult time for your family and for all of us as a Brockton Public School family. I know when I heard the news, I was out of town. The deputy superintendent had contacted me, and I know you know I mean this, it felt like a family member.
Thank you.
And, you know, I had the privilege, and not just as superintendent, and I tell this story often, you know, I was 22 years old, working in the district as an elementary teacher. I don't know why I applied for the cheerleading coach head job at Brockton High. And all I can tell you is it was eye-opening, all of the things that were happening up at that high school. It was vibrant, and Coach Columbo was such a big part of that, and I felt like such a little person, but he always made me feel welcomed. Was there anything that they could do to be part of the so-called, you know, team? I just have thought so highly of him for so many years, and that's never changed. And this is such a loss, and the tributes, and I know you saw them, we all heard them, you know, we will miss Coach Columbo forever, but we know that he will be there with us. He certainly is there in name for years and years of kids coming to Brockton High School and families that will certainly know his legacy and all of the things that he brought to the Brockton Public Schools and the Brockton community.
Kathy, thank you. Literally, five generations of players and students and colleagues basically said the same thing to me over the course of the tribute, and it's just been awesome. You know, in my letter to the school community, I mentioned family, and it truly feels like that for us. Every one of our family, including my parents, all graduated from Brockton High. It is a family thing to us. We talk about that on the football, in our football program. We think of it as a family, but the Brockton Public Schools has been an extended family for us, and it's really been a comfort and a great blessing to have, you know, the well-wishes and everyone on our side. So thank you all from my mom and my brothers and sister.
I know we have a couple of things for Peter, for the family, but I don't know if you want to have comments. We have a video, and we have something we'd like to present to Peter and for Betty.
We discussed it previously at another meeting, but your dad made all of the players, and even non-players, feel like they were part of his family. He was always there for advice. He was always there to encourage people, encourage students, you know, so he really is a big part of this community. And, you know, when I was at the high school, you know, graduated '83, I mean, he was, you know, his reputation was, you know, enormous, but he was just one of the nicest people you could ever talk to, and, you know, he'd give you advice about anything. I mean, it didn't matter if it was about sports or, you know, he loved to talk about school and careers and things like that. And there's, like you said, generations of players. There are so many people through so many of the different... You mentioned, I have some friends up in Lynn, and, you know, when they first found out I was from Brockton, it was like, oh my God, the Boxers and Coach... They knew Coach Columbo, and then they're naming off all these old-time players, you know, and it's just, it's incredible, you know, the Brockton aura and, you know...
It's a great tradition.
Armin Columbo is...
Tremendous tradition.
A huge part of that aura and tradition. I mean, so, I mean, I don't need to tell you about the footsteps you have to walk in, but, you know, he'll be greatly missed, and, you know, he just gave it his all.
Well, I just want to say, one of the... The only bad advice my dad ever gave me was not to go into teaching and coaching. And, you know, it was the 1980s, I had graduated from school, and people were being laid off and things like that, and I tried to stay away, but I found my way back, and, you know, 20-plus years in this system, and I'm proud to be part of just an unbelievable place and a system that changes the lives of students every day, and I see it from, you know, kindergarten right through the high school where I work at both levels. And it's just great to work with such professionals and in a place where the kids really matter.
I was fortunate to, I first became an administrator in 2001. I moved from East Junior High at the time to Brockton High as department head of phys ed, and it was Mr. Columbo's last three years teaching. So he actually brought me up as an administrator because he taught me to keep my mouth shut and fly under the radar until I learned what was going on.
One of the things, Mike.
So, you know, that advice I never forgot. So, you know, just learn, keep your mouth shut, pay attention to people that know more than you do, and you'll be fine, and that's served you well.
Good advice.
I have to just tell you one other story, Peter. So before I ever met your dad, before I ever lived in Brockton or really, you know, came here to teach, I was in college, and my roommate at the time, her father was the coach of Wallfam High School. His name was Cliff Poria.
Oh, yeah.
And I have to tell you how funny I think this story is, and I remember telling your father this once I came here. And of course, you can imagine the competitive nature. I had gone to Spelman, so Brockton was home to me.
Yep.
And her brother at the time, this coach Cliff Poria, and my roommate's brother, he was the quarterback of the team. And on Thanksgiving Day, we played Wallfam, and Coach Columbo and his son Peter was the quarterback. So you had two coaches, two sons that were quarterbacks, so already I was betting on you years ago. So I just thought that, I remember telling your dad that.
I knew the Poria as well, yes.
But we have something for you. I'd like to ask you to come up.
Sure.
Michael, why don't you come up?
Yeah, come on. So Peter, on behalf of the Brockton Public Schools, and this is for your family and your mom.
Oh, that's nice.
Really beautiful.
I'm in Columbo, Brockton High School, class of 1949, teacher and coach, 1969, 2003, and a boxer forever.
Awesome. That's beautiful.
Can you get some pictures?
Thank you.
I can come in behind you, Peter.
Great.
Thank you.
And do we have time to do the tribute? Do we have the video tribute? Let me pull aside here and get the lights.
Yeah.
Brockton's head coach is Armin Columbo, who in 20 years has a master record of 165 wins, 25 losses in one time.
Well, I think what you find is for our strategy in the Super Bowl, teams just decide more or less that what we did to get here, we're going to continue to do. Let's face it, Devon is undefeated, and they're not about to change anything at this particular point in time, and neither will we. Both teams have had outstanding seasons, and they would just stand to reason that what got you there is what you're going to use.
Brockton is going to be jubilant, and they deserve this, what a wonderful victory for the Brockton High School football program, and the city of Brockton in particular, in general. Well, Charlie, we've never made a habit of picking most valuable players for games, and I wouldn't want to try to do it today. So many outstanding performances, and I'll be told, you know, the somersault across the field sort of caps the whole thing for Brockton, as the Boxers finish the season at 10-1, take the Division One Eastern Mass Super Bowl, and claim the number-one ranking in Eastern Mass football, coming from behind in unbelievable fashion.
Please join me.
Okay, next item, Madam Superintendent, learning and teaching?
Yes, I would like to invite down here one of our graduates from Brockton High School just two years ago. Her name is Kelsey Drown. I can kind of see her in the audience. Kelsey, can you come join me up front? And I'd also like to invite Principal Margot Masson and one of our instructional leadership coaches, Jen Mills, to also come up. Kelsey, can you sit here, please? So I have to tell you, about a month or two ago, actually, it probably was even sometime early in September before the school year was getting off the ground, I received an email from a young woman who informed me that she had graduated from Brockton High a couple of years ago. She was now a sophomore at Boston College, and she was part of a student group looking at reform in education. And she had asked, and I'm sure they had read about some of the equity and some of the challenges that we had faced, and she asked if I would actually accept an invitation to come in and to speak to her student group. She couldn't have been nicer when I had to actually cancel my first engagement, and we scheduled it for just last Tuesday evening. And I've invited her. I was so impressed with this group and something that they did at the end that I want to share with you, and I would like, Kelsey, to tell us a little bit about... First of all, we're so proud of you going to Boston College.
Yeah.
I haven't been there in a long time. It is a beautiful, beautiful college campus. It just, there's more building going on than I imagined, and I'd like her to tell you a little bit about her experience and her group, and I know we have a picture to actually show you of the students at BC. Can you put that up? So, Kelsey, you can talk to us, and I'm not sure if everybody can see it with the lights on, but can you tell us a little bit again about your group and about your experience and what you're doing there for kids?
Yeah, so when I went to Boston College, one of the first things they tell you is to get involved, and so I was going through the Student Organization Fair, and there's hundreds of clubs. It's the most overwhelming, one of the most overwhelming experiences, and one table stuck out to me, and it was Students for Education Reform, and I saw the table, and I was like, if I do one thing here, this is the group I'm supposed to be involved with. Having come through the Brockton Public Schools, and I still volunteer and work at the Brookfield, just having that experience has showed me a lot, especially going to Boston College, what so many districts have compared to others, and how inequitable it is. So as a student group this year, I was chosen to be the series discussion leader, so I get to coordinate and lead the discussions every week for the group, and I bring a lot of knowledge from Brockton, and I kind of make that a big point. So I figured if we were doing that, we should try to bring in a speaker, so we invited Superintendent Smith to come, and it was a really great night. Everyone was really impressed. Students for Education Reform is a national organization, and the Massachusetts organizing director was so impressed with us, which was really awesome. I think she's all the way on the end of that picture. We had a great turnout. Normally, our meetings are pretty small, but we got a lot more people who don't normally come to our meetings to come, which was really exciting, because we're definitely always trying to grow our group, because BC has such a large social justice focus, so making that a point was really important.
And I have to tell you, Kelsey went to Brookfield, she then went on to Biangelo, went on to the Pluff School, and Brockton High School, and kids in this club came from all over. You know, it's, and of course, I asked that question at one point. I mean, they represented probably, you know, 10 different states when we were sitting in that one room. I thought their questions were thoughtful, they care about kids. They care about literacy for kids, reading before third grade, and I was very impressed having gone through college and education, and I'm not sure we were out there advocating and doing those kinds of things. So to see young people coming up that are going to become our teachers, and hopefully will come back to your home district, and also, I asked Principal Masson, because when I talked about you, I hear that you are completely dedicated, and I heard that when you were also talking about your involvement at the Brookfield. So, Margot, can you share with us the involvement?
Yeah, so, Kelsey, was it, remind me, was it your freshman or sophomore year you came over in extended day?
Seventh grade.
Seventh? Wow, I thought it was high school. So in seventh grade, she came over and approached me about doing some volunteer hours in the extended day program at the Brookfield School. I was not the principal at the time, but I was the site coordinator of the extended day program. And she came on in every spare minute she could. She came and dedicated to the Brookfield School extended day program, did a great job, always came in completely 100% engaged with the kids, did a fabulous job, and worked right through high school until she was finally able to come on as an actual paid member of the staff for extended day. She did years of volunteer work. She now still works the extended day program, but fortunately, now we can pay her. And every Friday, she comes home from college, and the first thing she does is come into the Brookfield School immediately upon returning for the weekend, and she comes in, you know, some days, weeks, I get an email saying I can be there the whole day, I won't be there till 12:15 or something. What can I do? She comes in, she volunteers, she works with our kids, and just does an amazing job. But I would definitely be lax and amiss if I didn't mention just the role that Jennifer Mills has played in her life.
Myself.
She has literally been a mentor to her since she has come to our school, and I know their relationship has just been one that has grown. Jennifer has led her in such a great direction, and seriously, I'm just so proud of both of them, so...
Well, I took the words out of my mouth, and I'm glad you did, because when Kelsey and I spoke, and we talk about our Brockton teachers, and there are many roles and many hats that they wear. Many times, it's when they are this teacher of the student, encouraging them to go into education or just being that mentor and role model. So Jen, you and I go way back, and I loved telling her as soon as she said that, I said, "You couldn't have had a better mentor." I'm so pleased that, you know, you have been that person for her, to guide her and to excite her about the teaching profession, and I'm sure that we're going to see this for many years to come. So I wanted you, I was very surprised, when Kelsey and her classmates who were involved in this group came and gave us a package to be delivered to the Brookfield School. So they have all kinds of, it's very heavy, they have all kinds of things, and Kelsey, you can probably, without unwrapping them, or you can tell everybody what we have here. So there's all kinds of things here for you. Let me give you this.
Biting my tongue since I came home last week was incredibly hard, because it was a half-day Friday, so I was there for six hours and couldn't say anything about this, but it's two Kindle fires and some school supplies.
Oh. Kelsey. Please join in thanking our friends from Boston College. I was very pleased for the Brookfield School, so you have some nice goodies to stop the holiday season, and I will tell you, one of the things that the, I believe, the head of the group came up and said, "We've tried so hard to get other people to come and to discuss, so one of the things I want you to bring back, whether it's other superintendents or other speakers," and I did commit to you that if there are people that I can reach out to and talk about, you know, differing opinions or ways to have discussions. We talked about literacy, you talked about getting in touch with the Boston Public Schools, so we are here to support you, and hopefully, you reach out to us again, and we'll try to make that happen for you.
Thank you so much. We definitely will.
Thank you very much, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I knew you would want to see that this is what goes on when the kids leave here, you know, the dedication to coming back, to supporting our students, you know, going to wonderful colleges. It's just a tribute to the teachers, you know, a tribute to how kids feel about the schools, and, you know, I think we are going to hopefully get kids to get into teaching and to come back and to work in our district. Next, I'd like to invite up Director of Grants, Karen Watkins-Watt, who is going to, as she does each year, do an overview for you of some of the grants and what's happening in the district. Karen, are you starting right away with the PowerPoint?
I will.
Okay, great. Yep, very good. Then I'm going to move so we can turn the lights down and actually see.
Want to sit here?
No.
I want to come back. You sure?
Right here.
Good evening. As Kathy indicated, she's asked me to do a brief overview for you of our grants office and some of the work that we're doing. We're going to just have a brief overview of our resources and web tools, what our mission and goals are. I won't read the slide too, but you can see what we're going to talk about. And we're going to give you an update on our funding. Let's see, and a look back at 2018 school year and a look forward to 2019, our 2018-19 school year, our current school year. So we have our physical grants office on the second floor of the Cars Administration Building, next to community schools, and we also have our virtual grants office on our website, which includes some tools and resources, a grant survival kit, some proposal development tools, such as a proposal develop, a proposal intent to apply form, which we're trying to encourage our educators district-wide to complete, so that we kind of have a handle on submissions, and we aren't doing any competing against each other. And then our BPS grants database is new and improved due to our Miracor Vista Capacity Building Project, project which we'll talk about in a few minutes. It's pretty, very, very much vetted and expanded from what it had been in previous years, so we're really pleased with that. So our mission, of course, is to procure federal, state, and private grant resources to support teaching and learning in the system, and to ensure that our grant proposals comply with district policies and, of course, approval by yourselves, the school committee, and that we're aligned with our, basically, our strategic plans, our district improvement plan, and our school, our individual school improvement plans, and aligning ourselves with such strategies as improving early literacy, making certain that our students are proficient in reading by grade three. Something, oh, I didn't mean for this automation to happen, but anyway, it's here. So basically, what we do, of course, is to provide research, proposal design, development, and technical assistance, and one of our key deliverables this past year was to launch for the first time our BPS resource development teams in our buildings. And those are building-level writing teams, and we basically launched them with two-hour grant writing workshops. And it was very well-received, and we're hoping to work alongside our teachers and administrators in our buildings to... administrators in our buildings to develop new resources. They are the ones that know where the deficiencies in terms of needs in our buildings are. So we're looking forward to working with them this year as well. And of course, quality assurance to provide, you know, effectiveness and timeliness, and then competitive persuasive proposals is our, is important to us as well. You know, we're in the age of online grants, so we basically are having to become proficient in certain systems like ed grants and COMBIs, which are state-supported online grants portals. So we're working very hard to make sure that our educators are well-versed in those systems. Okay. And so I just wanted to kind of give a real brief overview of the resource development process, just so you have a sort of a view of what the challenges are. Of course, the identification of resources are helping us to really match our mission with the mission of those that have our same charitable interest, working with students that, from diverse populations in the public education sector, urban students, low-income, under-served populations. And then the cultivation process is making connections with program officers. Oftentimes, we think about the ivory tower of some of the state and federal agencies and, but making connections with those individuals is really important to making certain that we, that we are able to effectively apply to some of those grant resources. They want to see good applications. And then solicitation, of course, is writing those persuasive narratives and compelling need statements to make our case for support. And then, of course, stewardship. And that's making sure we meet our fiduciary responsibility to grant makers, using the grant funds as we've agreed to use them, and submitting progress reports. So making certain that we are letting the funders know how their funds are being used, if there are glitches in the process, or if there are ways we can help to improve how we're operating our programs. Working hand-in-hand with our funders is an important, is an important part of our work. Okay. So now, so the 2018 grants total, as you can see, a little, little under $18 million. And about two-thirds of that were the entitlement grants. And so our role is to grow that left side of the pie. You can see the competitive grants in the various categories there. And then the legend, so. So what I wanted to do was kind of give you just a little bit of a few snapshots of some program impact. We'd be here all night talking about all the grants, but I wanted to give you just a few examples. So we've deepened our partnership with the Corporation for National and Community Service. Two years ago, we started our Miracor Vista program. And you can see our Vista Sam Lawson, that she was with us for a year, helping us to build capacity in our grants office. She's a B.C. grad that came to us and wanted to get that experience. And now she's actually gone on to work as a grant writer with a, with a private school in Boston. So we're real proud of, proud of the work that she's done with us. And, you know, her work has included helping us launch those resource development teams I mentioned earlier, helping us to vet and build that grant database, and of course, assistance, an ongoing assistance with research and writing grants for the system. And then on the left, you see our very first Miracor Direct Service Team that are in five of our schools currently. They're at the Angelo, Arnoh, Baker, Brookfield, and George Schools. And they are part of a, they are the culmination of our Miracor Early Literacy Grant that helped, helps, basically, helping us to deploy Miracor volunteers. And the purpose of Miracor is to serve in low-income communities and to alleviate poverty. That's the, that's the mission of Miracor. And we've been working with the Massachusetts Service Alliance, and they're our statewide Commission on Volunteerism and Service. And they are, so the tutors, there are early literacy tutors, and they are working with 20 students each. They are devoting basically a year of their lives to service here in the Brockton Public Schools. And that's a total of 1,700 hours each. And they are delivering an evidence-based early literacy program called Level Literacy Intervention for our students in K to 3 that are reading a year to a year and a half behind grade level, helping them to reach grade-level proficiency. And then some other things, I just wanted to kind of give you some visuals of some impact. And that was our partnership with Major League Baseball, which is a joint effort of the Major League Baseball Association and the Players Association. And so we went through a months-long process, myself with our athletic director, Kevin Cairo, and our facilities director, Jamie Domestico. And as a culmination of that, this summer, they came out and did a side visit, came down from New York, and have since awarded us indoor and outdoor batting cages that'll be put up this spring in Brockton, at Brockton High School. And they'll be also outfitting us with new softball uniforms. And then this past summer, we had our college application boot camp, our first college application boot camp. We hope to do this in future years. This was a vision of Dr. Teresa Mascherinas in the guidance department at Brockton High School. And so we were able to work with her to garner some support for the New England Association of College Admissions Counseling, let me get that right, yes, okay, NICAC. And the American Student Assistance Office that is actually on-site at Brockton High School. That's part of their mission, is to assist low-income students with financial aid, helping parents to complete the FAFSA forms, et cetera. So they were a great in-kind partner. And NICAC provided us with some funding to help us with that. And those are some college admissions reps there that are talking to the students on how to navigate the college admissions process, many of whom will be first generation in their families to attend college. Okay, and so now, moving forward, for this year, just a couple of samples of what we're doing this year. And that is being involved in the work of the, applying for the Innovation Pathway designation. And that is from the state's Executive Office of Education and the Mass Skills Capital Cabinet. They are helping us to launch our health careers pathway. So we've been working with Jonathan Shapiro and Kevin DePonte and their, their teams to help us, to help to put together this rigorous pathway in a very high-demand industry in the healthcare arena. So we were just told last week that we did, we're awarded a planning grant to launch this work. So we are, we just completed part A of the designation process. And we hope to now complete, we're actively working now to complete part B, which will be final designation as an innovation pathway for the 2019-20 school year. And that will provide us with the funding you see there. And then the state did announce to us that what they hope to do is per-pupil funding for this cohort model, which is, which is huge, actually. So we're looking forward to that work. And then also, of course, this is sort of healthcare-related, but our comprehensive school health services, working with our nursing supervisor, Linda Cahill. We are going to pursue a new competitive programming, which is the School Nursing Model Program. And that's gonna help us to employ a new nursing, not new, just for the first time, a nursing case manager that will help us do some follow-up case management for some of our students who are living with chronic health concerns, and helping to follow up with, with students and families that have been referred to doctor's visits for, for various conditions. And that's, that's just a very important piece for us, because when I saw some of the statistics, I was very alarmed, because there's like very small percentages of students, once they've been referred for dental, vision, hearing, whatever visits, that actually then follow through and make those doctor visits. So this case manager is a pivotal role. And then to launch a new bridge program, which will help us to help students that are transitioning from hospital and home teaching. And I'll stop and answer questions. Should I wait to the end? Wait to the end? Okay, wait to the end, okay. Let's see. And then I think this is the last slide. Yeah, this is the last slide. Okay, last slide. So this is the last slide. So our, some of our more recent work is, of course, with the U.S. Tennis Association, working with, again, with athletic director, Kevin Cairo, and facilities director, Jamie Domestico. We started what they've told us will be a months-long process in their facility, embarking on their Facility Assistance Program, which will help us to improve the Brockton High School tennis courts. And then trying to delve into even a deeper relationship with the USTA of Eastern Mass. They have a community tennis grant and a diversity and inclusion grant. And the community tennis grant will help us to grow participation in school with our varsity tennis program and out of school with our Brockton After Dark Program, which we collaborate with the city of Brockton. You're probably familiar with that summer evening program and the tennis, tennis programming that happens in the evenings. And then the diversity and inclusion grant, of course, is to help us to include, you know, our wide breadth of student participation and city-wide participation in the game of tennis, the sport of a lifetime, is what the USTA calls it. So that's, that's about it. I'll give you that overview. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. There's one on both sides, okay.
I was wondering, do you go looking for grants? Or do people call you that they have a grant? How does it work?
Both. It's like I was saying earlier, I mean, we work very hard in terms of our research process. And a big part of that whole capacity building effort I mentioned earlier was to help us to build our grant database. So we have built a database. It's actually resides online right now. And it's by content area. And so it's, there's a, it's a plethora of resources that are, that are actually there. And so it's available to educators district-wide.
Just one other question. And I'll pass it on to somebody else.
Sure, sure.
With $17 million last year?
Yeah, almost 18, uh-huh.
Do you have a goal each year of what you're looking for?
There's not a...
Or what you'd like to get?
There's not a dollar goal so much as there are strategic goals in terms of helping to improve teaching and learning based on, like I said, the strategic priorities that the, that the district has.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. DiAgostino.
One to Mr. Sullivan's point. I've actually, once or, once or twice in the past, had a constituent reach out to me and say, "Hey, have we applied for this grant?" And I forwarded that information onto your office.
I remember.
You know, so they could look into it as well. So they're, they're definitely looking. And when we find out about things, I know you look into them as well, and we can pass that on. Real quick, and I ask, because again, when we get into these tight budgets, as we've dealt with, we always hear from people, "Why don't you cut this instead of this?" And your office has been mentioned to me. So I wanted to ask, how many people do you have on staff in your office? Just you? So I'm getting to a point, if you just look at the competitive grants, and there's a reason, and this is why I make that point. So one person, one staff person, has helped us bring in, in competitive grants alone, $5.7 million.
But I will say that it's a team effort. It's not, like I was, I mentioned some of the folks that I work with, because I provide basically a technical resource, and our, our curriculum experts are the ones that, where we cultivate that information and get those competitive proposals into the hands of our funders.
Okay. I apologize, I should have said that differently.
That's okay.
But my main point was that, you know, we're, it's not a waste of money. It's certainly, we are getting back more than we are spending, which is my point. And I mean, right there, the number's right there, $5.7 million. I'm sure we're not spending near that to get that. And that, that was the point I was, I was making, because I do get that question at budget time sometimes.
Very district that was way ahead of the curve with grants. I mean, you brought in your first grant director back in probably 1999. And at that time, there were lots of grants, lots of, I always tell the story, we have more grants in the district than we knew what to do with. Some competitive, some were entitlement grants. It was just a great time for many districts, certainly Brockton. These have been the lean years. But because of making sure that you kept a grants office, a grant writer, if you were to move forward, and I'm sure that it's cyclical, and again, you will see a time where there are a lot of grants. Your economy is better, you know, I'm hoping that that will spur a lot of companies or organizations. The one thing that you do have, whether you look at the SPECT office, your Title I office, your teaching and learning office, you have people that, again, it is a team effort, and they're well-versed in being able to support each other in writing the grants. So right away, we bring Karen on board. She's got her, as you can see, whether it's athletics, you know, whether it's academics, you know, she's got her, you know, certainly, her fingers in a lot of pots.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to slate the people that help you at all.
No, 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 no.
But I, like I said, I've gotten that question before, and so I definitely wanted to point out that we are definitely getting a good value from your office and the folks that help you out, just on the competitive grant side. So I appreciate that. And clearly, you know, we're, we're getting a lot out of it, and it's making a difference. And, I mean, you know, there's a lot of things that we would be, we'd be even worse off, given our budget situation, if, you know, we didn't have this money that you've been able to, you know, with your team, help us get. So we appreciate the effort.
Thank you, yes. It's a collaborative effort with, like I said, with the, with the educators district-wide, as well as our community partners, some of our, the local colleges and universities, the business partners that we work with that are, that really make this, you know, make this work doable. Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
With regard to the, I mean, you, you had the Bill Belichick grant, now the baseball grant, the tennis grant.
I know, we're doing sports, aren't we?
You're doing wonderful with sports. So I think the superintendent mentioned that the climate these days is leaner than it's been. Is that, is that generally what's going on?
It is like the superintendent was indicating. It's cyclical. But one of the things I do look at, there's a, there's a, and I didn't, I didn't make it a slide this time, I did in previous presentations, but there's Giving USA report that's done every year. And it, and it does, does have some encouraging news this past cycle, which tells us that the generosity of our country is still pretty consistent, which is, which is why we, like I said, the left side of that pie in terms of focusing on growing our, our efforts to the private sector is important. But, I mean, we have, we've always had, year by year, of course, reliance on the, on the public sector, but that's the nature of the public education system. But more and more, as we sort of, you know, go into more and more relationships with the private sector, I think that that's, that's, that's just the way we need to go.
Do you see anything out there with grants with regard to technology? You know, any computer companies out there, you know, offering any type of grants to urban communities or...
I would say absolutely in terms of partnership. I'm not sure about, well, partnership and philanthropy, I'd say both. As a matter of fact, there were, we went to the Innovation Pathways Designation Meeting in Merrillboro this past week. And there were tech companies there, actually, they're in partnership with other districts in terms of helping to prepare students for these high-demand careers. And so they are, so we're getting more and more of these employers in the STEM fields and others that are, that are helping us to better understand the work, so that we can give our students very intensive contextualized learning experiences, authentic learning experiences, where they can do mentorships, and internships is what I'm trying to say. And, and then be able to be better prepared, informed on pursuing those careers, whether it's post-secondary certificate programs, or if it's pursuing a four-year degree.
Great, well, thank you. I know you work very hard, and you've been doing this for a while, and you do a great job. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'd like to invite up right now Deputy Superintendent Thomas, also Lieutenant Donald Mills. And we want to introduce you to Lieutenant Frank Fedaro from the Brockton Police Department. So I'd like to invite them all to come up. And I'm going to try to do the best I can with a history lesson, but you go back to our school police. We've had school police for many years. And back in 2009, there was a change in our... And back in two thousand and nine, there was a change in our, um, school police department and our collaboration with the city police, the Brockton Police. And at that time, again, I think we're always way ahead of the time when you talk about safety and security. We brought up the level of training, oversight with the Brockton Police, and it has certainly benefited when we sat tonight and talked about, you know, the safety and security, the drills for our staff members and our students, and making sure that we continue to be trained to take part in what's happening, not just around the state, around the nation. You know, we have done that to make sure that our schools are safe places, people when they walk in the schools, we'll talk about. And again, when you've got forty-two hundred students at Brockton High, they're amazed that it's orderly, the kids are learning, that they're interacting together. You know, is it always perfect? No, it isn't. You know, we have challenges, you know, with our large urban district. But we have such a wonderful collaboration and, uh, tonight, uh, we are learning, um, that Lieutenant Mills will be leaving us to go back to, uh, regular duties, I'm not sure of the shift or whatever, I'm sure at some point he'll share with us. And we will be welcoming, uh, in his spot, uh, Lieutenant Frank Fadaro. So first of all, a welcome to the collaboration with the Brockton Public Schools.
Thank you very much, folks, good evening.
And I know Deputy Superintendent Thomas wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, what's happening, there's going to be a transition and-
Yeah, um, Lieutenant Mills will be with us through, um, through the holidays and, um, to transition Lieutenant Fadaro. Um, I, when I came in, my first job at Central was the Director of, um, Operations, uh, and the gentleman before me who held the job, you know, was in charge of school police. Thanks to Mr. Minicello, played a big role with, um, actually the mayor, uh, Bill Carpenter at the time was on the school committee, and the school committee at that time, um, thought it wasn't the best idea to have, um, a, a layperson in charge of, um, you know, ladies and gentlemen that carry guns and, and sworn in police office. So fortunately, when I started, uh, at Central in July of two thousand and ten, Lieutenant Mills was given the command, um, a new command of school police, the commanding officer of school police, obviously a Brockton Police Lieutenant, um, and he came in and pretty much changed the department around. And not only that, he, not only changing the department around, but, um, he threw himself into, um, making sure he was trained and always on par with the up-to-date active school shooter training. He made sure that, um, not only the school police were trained in active shooter training, he made sure, um, pretty much the entire Brockton Police Department, over his eight years in his command of school police, were also trained in active shooter training. And he, he always encouraged the school police officers to make sure that they went to their training, uh, stayed up-to-date with all the changes that happen every time there's a, um, a shooting, a mass shooting, either whether it's in a school, whether it's in a nightclub or anywhere throughout, uh, country. They are always updating, the FBI, the Department of Homeland Security is always updating the training, and Lieutenant Mills stayed on top of that, also made sure the Brockton Fire Department was involved and obviously the rest of the Brockton Police Department. So personally, he's been a, a good friend of mine, obviously and a big help to me in the eight years that we've worked together. I, I've, you know, I've been in this position for eight years and, and I've been with Donnie for eight years and he's been, um, a huge support and, um, I wouldn't have been able to do my job and help make schools safe without Lieutenant Mills. All of our three thousand and some odd employees know Lieutenant Mills, rely on him, uh, and feel good about all the trainings he's, he has done, not only with our teachers, but in our custodians, uh, administrative assistants, um, our cafeteria staff, he's trained all our staff throughout the district and, uh, we, we obviously have the video that, that remains, um, that he did last year, that's, that's gone over really well. So I want to thank him for his eight years of service to the Brockton Public Schools and the Brockton School Police. But I also want to thank, you know, and welcome Lieutenant Fadaro, who I just met yesterday, uh, and, uh, I've heard nothing but good things from the people that I know in the city for a long time and, and, um, actually a few people have called me to say, uh, how much of a gentleman you are and how happy we'll be to have Lieutenant Fadaro with us. So we look forward to the transition between Lieutenant Mills and Lieutenant Fadaro, so thank you. Thanks. So that being said, there's big shoes to fill, all that stuff I gotta live up to. This is my second day, lot of names, I hope there's no test, really do. Um, yeah, but I'm excited, I'm glad that he's agreed to stay on and, and kind of help me out with this transition, you know, show me the ropes, take me around to the different schools, you know, um, meet all the different principals. I still, I don't even, I think I've met maybe an eight percent, maybe, of the, of the people I need to meet. But I've really been, uh, happy with what I've seen, everybody speaks highly of him, uh, so it is gonna be some tough shoes to fill, uh, but I'll do my best. I, um, I've been on the department for about twenty years, for the last six and a half, I supervised the gang unit for Brockton PD, um, came back to patrol, was offered this up, Donnie was, um, was, uh, big enough to pass the torch off to me and to stay on and help me out with this. So I'm, I'm very grateful.
And Lieutenant is also one of Brockton's own Brockton High graduates?
Yeah, I graduated Brockton High in eighty-six, born and raised here, been hanging around for a long time, so.
Well, I think, Mike, you said it best, one of the things also, besides Lieutenant Mills being able to handle some really tough questions at our community forums and does so with such grace and certainly with our content and knowledge, that people trust him. And, and, you know, sometimes it's very hard to please parents when you're talking and we know it, the safety of their children.
Right.
And how important it is. And we have had to labor through a number of nights when we've had tragedies happen and we have to assure parents that we're doing the best we can to, to educate, to make sure the children are safe and are able to do what they need to do every day.
Right, unfortunately, that's too bad, that this, the times require this. But like Donnie's been doing, we do our best to make sure that everybody's educated, that we get the information out there, training, training, training is key, we have to keep it up, can't get lax. So it is, it is a big part of what I'm going to, continuing on when I, you know, with his help, so.
And we're so pleased, you've always been a part of the Brockton Public School family, it sounds like.
Right.
And when you come in, you will have the opportunity, our principals, you know, depend on your leadership, uh, certainly depend on all of our school police, you know, they are involved, our school resource officers are involved in the building, our school police officers, you know, when kids see them, it, it's not fear, I, I think it's more, these are the people that care about me, that are going to support me, I know they develop relationships with some of our toughest kids that are in alternative programs in the evening, to some of our littlest kids, when I've seen them in the schools. I'll never forget, I think it was Officer Kevin Smith taking kids off of the bus when we had the kindergarten at the Barrett Russell for the first time, and he went back because he loved that job so many times, and the kids loved seeing him. So, so it really runs the gamut, it is such a great place to work.
Yes.
So we, we welcome you and I'm so pleased that Lieutenant Mills will be there to, to share with you, um, some transition time, so, uh, certainly the schools will be able to continue and move forward. So thank you.
Just a little bit of commentary, back in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, when I came on the school committee, um, with, with Mayor Carpenter, who followed, you know, we saw that the Brockton Public Schools had a, a unique resource, which was our school police force, and, um, not many school systems in the state have that. And, um, we wanted to make sure that, um, the force was being professionally overseen, um, developing their professionalism, we wanted to have, you know, the expertise of the police department. And, um, you know, Lieutenant Mills, I did not know him at that time, but, um, when he came on board, you know, he, uh, did a very thorough job in terms of assessing, you know, the, the, what was happening with, with the department, where it, where it was, where it, it is, where it needs to be and where it's going in the future. And, um, you know, one thing about Lieutenant Mills is that I think he instills confidence in, in both the parents and the staff of the Brockton Public Schools and has done a great job over the years. Uh, you know, the, the force, I think, is, um, you know, much further along than it ever would've been without, um, you know, his involvement. And, um, I, um, you know, back then, um, there just seemed to be a lot of inefficiency and, um, you know, not having, you know, having laypeople oversee, you know, a, a police force who, um, you know, needed to be overseen by fellow law enforcement and be able to deal with, you know, the issues, you know, back then compared to today weren't anywhere near what we have, but you can see over time how he, you know, instills in people, you know, the necessity of training and, you know, um, you know, we were never afraid to have, um, you know, inspections, um, drug-sniffing dogs, you know, we, we didn't care about embarrassment, what we cared about was making sure that the, the facilities and the schools were safe. And, and he brought about and was instrumental in, in terms of, you know, it didn't matter about showing the warts, we cared about what safety was all about in Brockton Public Schools. And, um, you know, he did that and, um, you know, I'm gonna personally miss him. But, um, you know, Donnie, you did a wonderful job and we, we all should be very thankful in terms of what you did. I'd like to just give you a round of applause.
Thank you very much for the kind words, I, I certainly do appreciate them and I've certainly enjoyed the, uh, over eight years that I've had here with the school department. Uh, it's been a great partnership, I've met a lot of beautiful people, I've made some great friends. Um, but I just would like, also like to say this, is that while you are meeting Lieutenant Fadaro today, understand I have met him twenty-one years ago, I've worked with him for twenty-one years and trust me when I tell you that he is a compassionate and intelligent man and more than capable to continue carrying this torch. Please go to home tonight and rest assured that you are not gonna see negative changes in any way whatsoever as, as this transition was forward. There's no doubt in my military mind of that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie.
Lieutenant, welcome aboard. Thank you, sir.
We'll enjoy working with you as well.
I will also. Bright and early tomorrow.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite up, uh, Dr. Heather Ronan, and I think June Saber-McGuire is joining her. Um, it is going to be. So Mr. Minicello is asking me if it's a presentation, yes, it is a PowerPoint, and one of the things we wanted to do, when we talk about STEM, your science, your technology, your engineering, your math, and many times you have STEAM with the arts included, you know, this is the future for our children, this is what we're looking to do and this is what excites our kids. So again, although we continue with the basics, uh, this, and I really can't say this is a new area, but it's an area, again, that, um, is something that we need to have for our kids in Brockton, will continue to improve and continue to focus, uh, in the area of STEM and STEAM.
So it's a fun presentation and you'll enjoy it, but I do have to say that, um, much like putting this STEM presentation together and putting this entire district-wide activity together, uh, Dr. Ronan was presented with a challenge, um, much like she was two days ago when she found out that she had to prepare Thanksgiving dinner for twenty-six members of her family, quite surprisingly. So when she returned to school in August, I shared with her that, well, she shared with me that the governor was really promoting STEM Week, but the only thing is, it was really something that needed to be put together in a really short amount of time. And so she did a tremendous job working with our team of STEM coaches across the district, and I'm sure that you'll see when she shares with you some of the photographs taken across the district, you'll see that what it ended up being was surprisingly fun, a lot of hard work, but really surprisingly very competitive, and I'll let her talk about that.
Good evening, um, yeah, so as June said, um, we had, um, an added challenge of, um, a very short timeframe that the governor put out to us to, uh, engage students in, uh, STEM Week. And as you know, with the start of school, it's very, very busy, there's been lots of changes, there's lots of things going on in schools, and, um, really the last thing they want to hear from, uh, central office is, guess what, we're gonna do STEM Week, isn't this gonna be fun? Um, so, you know, we talked, Jonathan Shapiro and I, in, uh, June, we had, uh, some meetings about how can we make sure that this is a really engaging, fun activity for the students, but it is really focused in on, um, our science, technology, engineering, and math standards so that, um, we can really showcase what students know and can do. Um, and we came up with a little contest for the schools. Um, and, um, we really, especially for our first year doing this, we wanted to make sure that, um, we really brought the science practices back into the classroom, that we are talking about, um, engaging lessons that are, um, motivating to students, but at, at the core are, uh, teaching the students those, um, science, technology, and engineering and math standards. And so we put out, um, in an effort to boost students' interest and raise awareness of science, technology, engineering, and math STEM education, the Brockton Public Schools, in conjunction with the Baker-Polito Administration, has declared STEM Week from October twenty-second to October twenty-six, two thousand and eight, and is asking educators at all grade levels to participate by planning lessons, events, and activities focused on science, technology, engineering, and math throughout the week. So what we had were lots of, um, students, lots of buildings participating in this, um, challenge. The challenge was, um, to come up with activities, lessons in the STEM fields with the theme of apples. And, um, we are very proud and really excited about the work that they did. We then had, um, administrators and educators throughout the district going in and viewing, and, um, they were judges. Um, we had, I, I have lots of judges in the audience as a matter of fact, um, but we just, it was a really, uh, a very collaborative, uh, group effort, and I think that as we move forward and hopefully continue this in the future, uh, we will get better and a little more critical as judges because it was so engaging and fun. Some of the judges had a hard time, you know, being tough, so everyone did a really good job. So I'm hoping you're going to enjoy, enjoy that little slideshow and, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions about it at the end. So it was a success, I would say.
I think you can see it was a tremendous success across the district, lots of enthusiasm, it was actually a lot of fun, we got to get out there, lots of people from central office and other schools, visiting other people's schools. Jonathan Shapiro actually judged a few of our, um, our classrooms and it was, it was really a lot of, it was a lot of fun, and Dr. Ronan, like I said, put it together pretty quickly, but with the- And Dr. Ronan, like I said, put it together pretty quickly, but with the support of the STEM coaches and of course, our teachers across the district.
Questions or comments? I thought it was, I mean, that's just a fun way to learn. You can tell students are having a good time and they're learning.
Do you know the song? And it's going to be?
What's the song?
Apples and bananas.
Apples and bananas.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know that.
And so we already have a theme for next year, so.
It'll stay in your head all night. It's been in my head for a couple of weeks.
But I just think that students, you know, learn quicker and have a lot of fun learning and doing it, you know, with interactive type of projects, you know. So it's like a fun day at school and it's like, it wasn't any work. It's like, oh, great, I learned all this stuff and I had a really good time today, so.
So one quick, sorry.
Very effective.
Do they learn? I think the one thing is their explanation. So when you're looking at any of their fairs or things that they have had trial testings on, you know, it is amazing the depth of knowledge and how much they take in because of the responsibility they have for that.
And the teachers did such a great job of making sure that they were really stressing that engineers fail. They fail most of the time and that the important part of that is revising and trying again and learning from your mistakes. One quick story, as only Brian Rogan could have at his school, in the middle of their Apple Palooza, the fire department came for a fire drill. And they were all in the midst of doing all of their apple activities. They were out in the hallways doing lawn rockers and so many different things. And as Mr. Rogan, in his way, can do, he somehow convinced the fire department to hold off on the fire drill and made them all judges and come around and judge all of the activities going on in his school. So we were quite pleased with that, weren't we, Dr. Kansel? Yes, yes.
I do want to mention that there was a winner. We did have a four-way tie and then we decided that we would go to a lottery because we couldn't decide between them. And so the winner was the Raymond School. And I do want to say that Carol McGrath was one of the most competitive principals in this process.
You're saying a lot.
And I also want to thank Tom Burke publicly because one of the prizes that we would provide an apple crisp social for the winning school. And so what he was able to do was provide that same apple crisp social for the four schools that had the four-way tie. And he was so just really gracious in being able to make that happen for those schools.
Well, thank you very much, June.
Thank you.
Good luck with your Thanksgiving dinner for '26.
Thank you, thank you. That's going to be a tough one, but all good.
Thank you, Dr. Ronan. Thank you. You know, I was remiss after the Amen Columbo tribute. I do want to thank the Enterprise for putting together the video of Coach Columbo and for allowing us to use it to show to everybody. So once again, thank you to the Enterprise, a partner with us. I want to finish up this evening, a couple of things, and I'm sure some of you I know were there and I know you'll join me in talking about this past week. We had the National Honor Society. 63 members were inducted at Brockton High School. It is amazing to me to see the level, again, of the students that are inducted into the National Honor Society. They're inspirational teachers, teachers along the way from elementary to middle school to high school teachers that have supported them. And to hear the places that they're looking to go, what their dreams are, what their careers are going to be, it is just heartwarming, I think, for all of us to see the success of our students. Today, we had 281 students that received the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. This is from our class of 2019. Again, very exciting to see as their year continues to progress and they get closer to June, you know, all of these wonderful opportunities to celebrate the academics of our students. And again, we have certainly had classes with probably larger classes with, you know, up to 300, but 281 of our students are eligible, you know, for the scholarship if they go to a state college. This is something started almost 20 years ago. You have to have proficient, advanced on your MCAS, be in the top 25% of your class. So these are certainly your star students. And I do want to tell you, when I was leaving there today, Dr. Diane Davis came up to me and she said, "I do want you to know, I count and I look at some of the students that are students that have had some special need along the way and have been able to overcome that and to have that kind of achievement again is excellent for all our students." So congratulations to all our students. Also, a couple of things. The Jingle Bell Run is going to be on Saturday, December 1st. That is the Enterprise Helping Hands. This year, because of the closing of a number of conference centers in our locality, we will be hosting that at Brockton High School. I know they're looking for people to sign up. People go as teams. People dress up. It's really the highlight and one of the kickoffs of the holiday season and it benefits so many families in so many ways in Brockton. So again, if you can contribute, if you can help out, if you can volunteer, I know Dave Gorman is certainly available and would be pleased to have that help. And I know the mayor is also supporting this and wanted me to share that with you. Also, we are having a first-of-its-kind party, snowball get-together with our staff members throughout the district, and we're asking for people to bring an unwrapped gift. John Snellgrove and our school adjustment counselors do a wonderful Christmas holiday dinner, which we used to have at the Shaw Center. We're also going to be doing that at our own Brockton High School. But until we can figure this out, because there are a lot of kids and families, well over 400, you know, we are going to continue with this year and figure out as we go forward a way to make sure that that continues for our children. Also, I was at the MAS, MAS C Conference. We had a team presenting on trauma-sensitive schools. We had right here from the unknown, Principal Colleen Proudhler. We had Principal Natalie Poehl from the George School. And we also had Julie Morgan talking about the support that we give to the schools. Dr. Torasi led the discussion and they did an excellent job. Also, we had the Tale of Two Sisters, which was the sister from Burlington and the sister from Brockton, Karen Kavanaugh and her sister Laura Phillips, that both grew up here, both teaching two separate districts. And the Tale of Two Sisters is all about the disparity in what is happening in Burlington and what is happening in Brockton, mainly because of funding. So again, this is going to be something, they're going to be telling, I think, the Tale of Two Students, students that are friends and are in separate district and will continue to make sure, and Brockton again is right at the center. Also, we had a student who is the captain of our Brockton High School golf team, and he has been nominated for the Mass Golf Volunteer of the Year Award, given by First T. I know there have been a number of coaches out there, I think the athletic director, I believe Dr. Murray, who have written letters of support, you know, for this very deserving student. And we are hoping that he is able to receive that award. I'll keep you updated. Mr. McCree is going to be the grand marshal of the Holiday Parade this coming Saturday, the 24th. So let's all get out there and support him and wave to him. I guess it'll be a different role for him riding in a fancy car at the parade instead of leading the Brockton High School band. And I want to finish up with the Brockton High School Harmonics. We're attending their 34th Annual Base Stage Show Choir at Oliver Ames High School during the Veterans Day weekend. It was a two-day festival. I believe 10 other high schools participated. Matt Cunningham, of course, leading the way, and also Jackie Parento working on some of the choreography for the group. So congratulations again to our students and our staff. That is my report.
Okay. Next item is unfinished business, superintendent evaluation. Earlier this evening, we had a superintendent contract review subcommittee and went over the superintendent's evaluation. We noted that the superintendent received from the school committee an excellent evaluation. This is the highest evaluation in terms of numbers that she came in with, which was a 3.40. I will read for you some of the comments that were a part of the evaluation process with regard to professional practice goals in building district capacity for increased leadership. One of the comments made by a member of the school committee was that the level of advocacy this superintendent has maintained for our district has certainly been beyond expectations. We could have not asked for more from her. Another comment, the superintendent always goes to schools to make sure students are getting all they need. With regard to students receiving rigorous training to meet the standards of the 21st century, another comment by one of the members is the superintendent is continually seeking increased funding to address technology. Students are offered multiple pathways to address all styles of learning. A successful preschool program was implemented this year to address students affected by the change to the kindergarten entrance age. She implemented the Red Apple Awards, used to recognize hard-working teachers, which in turn helps students succeed, which is true. That was a very nice program that you implemented to show appreciation. With regard to the facilities and the master facilities plan, the superintendent's strong advocacy led to the development of the facilities' master plan. Many steps have been taken in this area, from the south end transitions to the recent review and planned renovation of North Middle School. Progress is being made. Anything done, anything not done yet is a lack of funds and not a lack of effort. With regard to engagement to families, the superintendent has improved engagement with families through renovation of the district website, expansion of the parent information center, implementation and expansion of foreign language programs, and additional support to bilingual and special ed education programs for parents and families. Superintendent has also addressed the diverse school community with the addition of the Portuguese language immersion program, the teacher exchange program, and the Amity French immersion program. And there is, she also developed a diversity task force that meets regularly to discuss such issues. With regard to development of structures for vertical and horizontal articulation, schools are her priority and have required creativity on her part in order to provide the support needed in specific areas despite limited resources, which is certainly a, was a theme throughout the evaluation, that, you know, if the budget were a lot better in Brockton, the superintendent certainly would have had more weapons at her disposal, resources. So she basically is a master at doing more with less and being creative in order to achieve the supports at different spots in the system. And that takes a lot of hard work, which you certainly put in so many hours, more than anyone I know, to be honest with you. With regard to standards of professional practice, a couple of comments by members. Throughout her career, the superintendent leads by example and motivates people to support the district mission that all kids count. And really, to sum up her work ethic, one member wrote that Superintendent Smith works long hours to ensure that the district is successful despite deep budget cuts. Her vision, strong work ethic, and respect for all staff and students motivates the district in a positive way, which is also very true. So, overall, those were the types of comments that the members made. So that is basically my report of the superintendent contract subcommittee meeting that took place. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the superintendent contract subcommittee meeting of today?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. And then a motion to implement the 3.40 scoring that the superintendent received as her overall number with regard to performance through the evaluation process.
Motion to implement the 3.40 scoring.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business. New business? Anyone here to report on, did anyone go to any of the classrooms this week for teaching? Didn't you go? The invitation of the high school to attend and teach a class?
Educated for a day.
Yes.
Yes.
How about commenting on your experience?
I attended Brockton High School, we were invited in, school committee and I think city council was invited in to be educated for the day. And my eyes were open to a lot that goes on at Brockton High School that I didn't know about. So, but I had a very positive experience. I talked to the students in Math 1 class, and I'm going to go back and speak to them again after the holidays. But it was a very positive experience and I got to see what goes on, you know, in the hallways between classes and during classes. And it helps me vote on things after seeing, you know, getting the whole picture. So that was helpful to me.
So Mrs. Sullivan said to me was she got to be a floor teacher.
Yes. And I really never knew what a floor teacher did, but I do now. It was very interesting. I felt like the police.
Keep them moving.
Yes.
I got to attend a freshman biotechnology class and the instructor, Ms. Tejo, informed me that she wanted me to actually teach a subject in the class. And I was like, oh, boy. So she said that one of the things they were going to be doing was scientific investigation and DNA results. So I said, what can I do? So I said, okay, DNA results, how do we get them introduced into evidence in a courtroom?
Oh.
So we basically went through the process of, you know, the collecting process at the scene of a crime, the categorizing, the chain of custody, the qualifying, the witness, the scientist or DNA specialist to be able to be qualified as an expert witness and approved by the judge. And then, you know, going through the different methods that they need to introduce the evidence and make sure that it wasn't contaminated and, again, you know, proper chain of custody and that both sides, you have to try to get a specimen that both sides can do their own testing on. Just because you introduce DNA evidence doesn't mean the defense doesn't get to take the sample if there's enough. And if there is able to be enough, you have to collect enough so that they can have a sample too, to confirm what your expert's saying. And it was great. The kids, the kids were wonderful. At first, at the end, I was like, wait, what level class is this? And they're like, oh, we're freshmen. I'm like, you're very impressive freshmen, you know?
So did you end up recruiting lawyers or scientists?
Well, at the end, they asked me how much a lawyer makes, you know? So I said, well, it depends on how good you are, you know? So, but no, I think, I think a bunch of them are going to be scientists. I think a bunch of them are going to be politicians.
And that's what we want is scientists.
There you go, yeah. But I bribed them with donuts too, so that was good.
Helps. Always helps.
Yeah, really. So it was a great experience and the kids were wonderful, so it was good. Anything else? Anything else going on?
I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment to, once again, thank Cradles to Crayons. This is the first time that we were able to partner with them as far as the coats, hats, and gloves. They provided 500 winter coats and 500 hats and gloves. So today's been a busy day. After I attended the scholarship ceremony this morning, I headed into Brighton to pick up the coats with our facilities department. I just want to thank Mr. Thomas in our facilities department. They're always there for me. So, you know, if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be able to bring back the backpacks or the coats. So as busy as they are, they always find time. So I do appreciate it and I'm sure that the students are going to appreciate it. I am working with Mr. Snellgrove and he's reaching out to our adjustment counselors. So I've already started delivering some of the coats this afternoon. So they're wonderful quality. Our students are going to be warm. If there are any parents that are out there that are having a hardship, reach out to us. We'll do our best, first come, first served, to try to just get some winter coats out to you, to help you. So, and reach out to the school department.
What ages do they come up?
We have quite a variety. We, starting at 2T, 3T, 4T, up to, I believe it was 1820. So we have girls' jackets and boys' jackets. And the other thing is that I find, I mean, they leave little notes. These are some of the hats and gloves. They match them up with some of the jackets that we have. You know, joy is one of them, you know? Stay warm, little things like that. So, you know, Carrie over at Cradles to Crayons, I just can't say. So, you know, Carrie over at Cradles to Crayons, I just can't say enough. They're so generous with us. And this is the first year they've done this, so I'm hoping that this is going to be something that they can do year after year. But I know that this is going to come in handy, especially for our Brockton, Brockton students. So I'm excited to be able to partner with them again and bring these back to Brockton. So it's a good way, and I was hoping to get these out before Thursday, knowing we're going to have such a cold.
It's just in the nick of time.
So these will start, as of next week, we're going to start delivering more. So thank you again, and can't say enough about Cradles to Crayons.
Thank you, Joyce, for spearheading these. And having been a school adjustment counselor, and those calls come in, or the principal, or the teachers will come to you and say, so-and-so came to school with a small sweatshirt or a jacket that they've really outgrown. So to be able to have something like this to support parents, to make sure that every kid, and we have a lot of walkers, we have close to, what, 9,000 walkers that come to school every day. So this is terrific. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
And I know it will really benefit the families in this community.
Benefit the families, and actually, hopefully, this will help out some of our staff, as many of them go out and purchase jackets with their own money. And that's hotwarming right there. So hopefully, this will help them in so many ways. So thank you to our staff, because I mean, I've already spoken to quite a few of them. They're like, oh, I'm picking up jackets over the weekend to bring back to the students. So thank you.
Very good.
We're very lucky.
Thank you very much.
Joyce, anyone else? No? Okay. Next item. Did we do new business, or was that new business? That was new business, okay. All right. Normally, we don't have executive sessions, but tonight we do. So we have some personnel matters that need to be dealt with, and we are going to need to go into executive session for that. In order to do that, we need to take a roll call vote. So, Mr. Sullivan?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Yes, is my answer.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, now, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Azak? Mr. Coromly?
Yes.
Yes.
Plant? Mr. DiAgostino? Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes, 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 okay. All right. To go into executive session. So we are going to go into executive session, just to inform the public. And after we come out of executive session, there's going to be no further business, so we will adjourn. So why don't we take a five-minute break, allow people to leave that do not have business here this evening? Thank you very much for attending, and we will re-adjourn in about five minutes in our executive session.